And I'd like to invite you to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is order of business to approve the match from March fifteenth, favor of me. Then I have on the calendar some orders. Approve the matters from the fifteenth of November. Okay, I will second it. All for vote. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then we have all of our claims. Are you looking for one?
Yeah.
And to approve them as long as the figures. Value this bill. Okay. Motion is to approve them as long as the figures match with everything on the agenda. Now I'll second that. In favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Well, here's one of the claims. There's a claim that I brought up to you that
Yes.
you'd like to have approved too because I'm picking up the claim tomorrow. It's supposed to be paid. I want to take it out.
Is this, uh, this is not reflected on any of these? These are all, uh... Public safety platform.
They're being delivered tomorrow.
If you bear with us, we go across that claim sign.
I wish to see how much it is so we...
Red mind.
It is two. Conley hope he gets all the claims, so she'll want to know how much that is.
Okay, we've had a claim presented to us here for, uh, would you describe it for us, please?
Yes, sir. It's for the, uh, that health incident in Mobile Operations Center that we got off the Cares money.
Uh huh.
I actually had to step out because I got a phone call from the manufacturer. It was supposed to be delivered tomorrow. They're actually bringing it down this afternoon.
Oh, cool.
And then, so, since I'm up here, real quick, I need a place to park it. Right now, since we don't have a place, um, would I be able to park it between the beef barn and the expedition or the expo barn at the fairgrounds? Would you guys have a problem with that?
Do you have a problem with it? What position?
To park it over at the fairgrounds? Yeah, I went over there. There's a drag between the beef barn and the expo barn. There's already a gravel drive there.
That would sound fine to me. The other thing would be maybe the floor on the highway department.
Hi. Inside the highway, there is. Inside the highway department, there's not. Um, I've already got two trailers that I picked up yesterday or last week setting outside the highway department. Those are the mobile barriers that I picked up last Wednesday. They're setting outside the highway department right now.
Okay. So you're filling out the highway department?
I've got two, I've got two trailers over there. I've got the two light towers came in. They're down in the county parking lot. This trailer's coming in today. He's gonna come back with a better timeline this afternoon. And then, uh...
You have the two signing tools, too?
I've got three signing tools.
Three signed.
Uh, but they're deployed right now.
Right.
Um, and then I'll have the two surveillance towers that are yet to be delivered.
Well, more than all that, you're from there. So this claim here is for that trailer. We have the money to pay it, I guess.
Yes, it was encumbered from last year. And that is ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and twelve cents.
Did I get that?
I struggled a little bit, but I got it.
And that was from...
Fifty-four twelve.
Right. And that's right, that was from the Cares money.
Trailer and all he put on. Trailer what he put on?
Yes. It's already, has the radios in it. It's got the generator with it.
Well, let's just make a separate motion, though. It's not available. Okay, I'll second that. Motion that we pay this ninety-seven plus thousand dollars. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you want this one back?
Sure.
Thank you. And now we're ready for custody. Keith Freeman. Good morning, Keith.
Morning, gentlemen. Uh, start off with the shed estimate. So the cost increase of the materials and stuff that's going up as of, which they ended at April first, and the new cost went up. Which bumped the price up to where you guys want me to look at, a twelve by twenty, um, utility?
Yes.
Um, the breakdown of the actual shed is five thousand sixty-five dollars. The eight-foot walls for, have installed the roll-up side door. So when the shed is set in sideways, they had the roll-up door wired to eight-foot wall. So it's, um, in the leveling and everything included with the delivery charge, it's a total of, um, five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, that is, the only thing that does not include is the gravel. We would have to purchase to put down, to just down top of it. So, um, I don't know how much gravel is currently. It wouldn't be that much for an inch to two inches of gravel laid down as a base.
Well, maybe you can talk to Ken about getting some stone over here for it and see if we can level it up.
Okay. But that's, um, that's still, even when their pricing agrees of the materials, it's still the cheapest price around, you know, pre-made, delivered. And they do the leveling after we put the stone down.
Is it painted?
Um, yes.
Is it that gold?
No, it's, it's all metal. No, no, no. It's, it's all metal.
Metal?
Yeah, it's all metal.
Some of those are so bad.
Yeah. Yeah, it's all metal, so longevity is there. I'm worried about tearing wood and all that stuff.
Well, sounds good. Do you, what do you think?
Yeah, would be a power that's out for it.
No, not yet. Um, yeah, it would be something new, really matches with a courthouse. You don't just stick that out or whatever. Purple with sparkle. I would, I do not have current funds to support this. Um, so I'm just, want to know what you guys recommend.
Where, where are we getting this from?
Um, this would be coming from Little Fawn. They're on seventy-five.
Huh?
Thomas Ford.
Yeah. What, what funds do we have to do for?
I would, starting this year, being a little slow on the utility side, I might have some there from the utilities left over at the end of the year. To start out with, um, like just getting five on that. So I'd be glad, I might have at least a couple of months worth of utilities saved back on that since it's been used for...
I would, uh...
Starting it with Beth and...
Yeah, I'd suggest you get with Beth and see if there's any... The council. But there's actually...
Like courthouse maintenance, you know, the thing that?
I would, um, if they prefer, I can go over the budget line and see where, work with him.
So you're giving us permission to, I mean, I don't want to spin it from somewhere that I don't know it's right.
Well, I think...
Yeah.
What, what I?
You mean out of his budget, try to work with him?
However we can do it or out of our maintenance, but it is, uh, I don't know what we have. That really isn't first floor, so it's not, uh, something that can come out of that remodeling, I don't think, that council gave us for, for support renovation.
We'll see what we can do and present it next and then we'll send it.
Yeah, yeah.
The place name of East Bay won't let. How long to place people?
I don't know. Fluctuation material, like, I don't know. Um, they, they raised, within a couple of weeks, they raised eight hundred and ninety dollars. From their, from what their original cost.
The steel's going up, thirty's going down, so.
Okay, let's go to plaster on the third floor.
Um, last year, um, I presented you guys with some photos of the issues of some of the walls and spastic plaster on the third floor. Um, so the picture I presented you guys showing the third floor, that's the probation hallway. The plaster is held up there with adhesive when they first put the plaster up there. The black spots along the pillar and along the top is, I had to go up there and bust that down because the plaster was hanging at a point where someone would have shut a door hard or else it fell. My update for this is that I had to knock all that stuff down to prevent any kind of harm for any staff members. And then, I'm still not having any luck at all to get the contractor to even come and look at the walls or anything else. Not even an estimate. And I don't think that, you can get a contractor in here, unless they, someone surprised me, that's going to put plaster back up. This plaster being already on concrete, probably a contractor would recommend, like, taking down the damaged areas and then, like, smoothing out the wall and just painting the wall. You can see along the pillar there, uh, where it's black, kind of bust all that down. You can still see a little bit there in the top right here corner, in the edge line right there. Where I've had to knock that down, where it's just getting loose. It's getting moisture in behind it. It's just bubbling it out and breaking it off.
Roots leaking above that?
No. No, but you have the skylight, temperature fluctuation, and getting on the third floor, um, it's gonna get moisture in the walls. So, it's kind of like, that's just an update from...
I don't know. You may know who does the plaster work with this old, current plaster. Kind of all started. Well, it's kind of all started.
Yeah, if anybody's got, um, need my email address, and anybody has any ideas or any names to refer, place them to me.
That looks for you, that Joe Kitch links to it for preservation. Everybody does drywall now.
Yeah, you guys, I'm okay with it. And even Galliins, because of the rustling of the skylight. Um, even Galliins that did the repairs on skylight last time, they won't come out and give an estimate on skylight. It's where it's at, where it's taken from in the middle of the scaffolding that they have to build up that skylight to get it there. So, that's another venture.
Oh, yeah, it's been, uh, eleven years to seal that all. Our dome out here is leaking some. Got some drips coming down through it. The dome you see when you look up there is not the outside dome. The dome on the top of that. That, I don't know how, because it comes up, out there. How you fix, you can't crawl out of that glass oven in the middle up there.
No, I wouldn't, um, I mean, I know there's, I've seen pictures where they've shown the people out there in the middle of it with their feet hanging over the edge, um, when they were fixing it last time, putting new glass pieces in there. I don't know who did it then, but yeah, from what I can find on record, Galliins, the last one to come out here and look at it. So, that's, that's another one. Okay. Figure out, maybe that. So, just for confirmation on the, on the shed, we're gonna research item on, our budget line and bring it back. That's all I have.
Going around, following on the board.
Um, still slow getting some parts in, but it's coming together pretty quick. So, yeah, it's coming pretty good. So they got it almost to where they can run a test run on it. Um, let me just go from there. Well, be for the one, the primary, which is what they've been trying to fix. And the secondary, which is kind of failing, that'll be another issue once we get that one again. And they're already on start getting one completely going, up and running. So I might as well continue with that one before they backtrack and try to repair ones. So. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Uh, it's time for us, a little early, nine thirty, uh, opening bids, which still goes probably nine thirty. We're gonna scroll off for just a second. Uh, Beth, you want to get your part down there?
In your packets here were quotes for enact the access points, um, rings they were given to me, those are to, for wifi. And they are going to come like seven years ago, as he said. They are dwindling out, as he said, they need it upgraded. They also need to get a couple more. I believe that was one more, sorry. Um, there's two in the basement, there's two on the second floor, there's one, two on the first floor, and there's one in Circuit Court. So the additional will go upstairs closer to the Superior Court, somewhere in there, so the wifi can be, be used. These were bought when we bought the phone system, so that's how long ago it's been. He is recommending the last one for the five-year license because of E5, pay for free, you get two years free. And it's not that much more than the three-year.
Okay, so we have, we have their three different quotes, are they?
Uh huh. Ones for one year, ones for three years, and ones for five years, assuming things different. So the top one is the five years that he is recommending, and it's, the term of this quote is for thirty days.
Five years, oh, only two hundred dollars more than three. One year, two hundred. Correct. Five years, fifty-seven hundred grand?
Yes, because there's seven hundred and twenty dollars each on the...
Per, 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 per unit.
Per unit.
Eighty-seven, four, five year. And eight years, double one year, which is five hundred and fifty. Two hundred dollars more, seventy-six, seventy-six hundred dollars. Well, it's like definitely, five-year lease is a better deal than one or three.
And it's if you pay all your equipment contracts. That's what it does.
It's the same thing as usually. It's the viable permit, it's ours, and you buy the license.
The license is where it's at.
Looks like you're asking for five years. I'm, I'm agreeing. The, the five-year license agreement. Clear cable and consulting, fifty-seven hundred and sixty dollars. Okay, and I will second that. So all in favor of, uh, the five-year program here for access point lease cable, cable and consulting for five thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars? Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
I'm gonna skip down to the TIF management report. This is a, you should have that in your packet also. It's the, um, a report that's given to us by Baker Tilly that, um, which they prepared for us. It, um, is due to the council and the commissioners and then DLGF on Gateway for the DLGF by April fifteenth. And, um, we have to acknowledge that you received this report and it has to be in the minutes that, um, you have, that you have received it. There's no approving of it. It's already done and it's been loaded into Gateway. So I just need an acknowledgement that you have received it, put in the minutes.
I'll let the founder of the knowledge, the management board, that again, we're on a redevelopment commission. I'll adjourn the motion and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. What we're looking at is a TIF management annual report for the redevelopment corporation. And it shows, um, main thing is that it shows funds. Anybody like to know their, the allocation fund that has five hundred forty thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-two cents in it? Bond fund with nothing in it. Carol CRDC, is what we're talking about, redevelopment corporation. Fund has three hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and thirteen cents in it. And they have a savings fund with three million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Okay, next slide, Beth?
It is an ordinance for the American Rescue Plan Act, which went into bed, uh, March the eleventh, when it became law. And it, our first distribution will be sometime in May, around May eleventh. Um, I've asked Ted to prepare an ordinance to create a fund, um, because that's one of the first things that we have to do. So, it's a non-revering fund. You just need somewhere, when we do get this money to place it, then we have to prepare a plan on how we are going to spend that. That's gonna take some thought and effort, because you have to have it in writing. And have to, and it has to be agreed with.
Okay, so we're looking for requests for an ordinance on American Rescue Plan Act. Which is not the same title as on the ordinance. Yeah, it kind of is.
What ARP isn't that?
Your own viola, there is fiscal review, over.
Does that mean any of us consent, so that we have to wait custody to?
No, you don't have to wait, no.
Okay. I'm just making sure.
You could, uh, you can do the two motions, if you're, if you're ready to consider this, and you can adopt this. The name right, and the two motions, first one, the motion to consider ordinance, uh, twenty twenty one oh one on the same date of induction. And that, vote on that. And then the second motion after that would be to adopt, uh, ordinance, twenty twenty one issue one. But it hasn't been read yet. It should be read by title anyway, at least, so, um, I didn't get the script out for you, but the motion would be to motion for three, ordinance twenty twenty one issue one by title, unless you want to read it in the White House. Unless you want to audit it to read the whole thing.
You can barely, you can get it all.
I didn't include...
I committed up here on the screen.
Yeah, that'd be very nice.
Want me to read it by title? I will.
You're gonna make a motion to read it by title?
This is an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Carroll, creating a American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Fiscal Recovery Fund.
Little background on this, the Board of Accounts assumes this law passed by Congress that you went into effect March the eleventh. The Board of Accounts, uh, sent a directive to all counties, which I've got a copy of here and memoranda that went with it. Saying that there wouldn't be any money distributed unless all the units, this cities, towns and counties. Uh, the money's gonna go directly to the cities, towns and counties. It's not going, as I understand it, it's not going to the state.
Right.
Nobody else has to approve it, it's gonna be, it's gotta have like, it's gotta have a home before it can be put in. And it might come before May eleventh. So you have to have the fund in place and the language of the ordinance was, uh, is prescribed by the Board of Accounts. They're the ones that said ARP coronavirus, you know, that's, so that's what's named that. But the four purposes are the, the things that are in section D, one through four. Those are the purposes that the fund's gonna be used for. So if you're not deciding this, uh, you're adopting the ability to use one or more of all four of those purposes. But that, you know, after you adopt a written plan, so. And the money doesn't have to be spent or encumbered until December thirty one of twenty twenty four. So this doesn't have to be, you have to come up with something right away. Uh, you can give this some thought, uh, I think you probably see people, the wheels turning on how this can be help community. Uh, there's a lot of things you can't do, I'd look to see if you could put it in the jail, no way. Only thing that could be done along that line would be number four. It's on the second page. Uh, no, I'm not there, number three. Uh, number three on the second page. Uh, one of the purposes is for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of the county due to COVID nineteen health, public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year of the county prior to the emergency. That's a mouthful. What that's saying is you take twenty twenty. Uh, revenue, all the county revenues. And if, if we can demonstrate that twenty twenty one revenue, twenty twenty two revenue, twenty twenty three revenue, twenty twenty four revenue are less than that than they were due to the COVID thing. Then you can put money into general government stuff and one of those could be a jail, you know. But that'll be the only way, and I, I, I've researched this thoroughly. That's the only way that I can see you can do that, it couldn't go to highways. It does say under four on the second page, to make necessary investments, that's the way the government likes to talk now, on investments, yes. Taxes, spending, but to make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. Well, we don't do water, we don't, we brought, we're not doing broadband as a county, this is for the county. So the only one possible is sewer. I figure that if you wanted to pay for the sewer extension that's necessary to put the jail on that side. I think you could use these monies without any proof of, uh, reduction of revenue, you could pay for the sewer extension. And I mean, if you wanted to do any more than that, uh, I don't know, I mean, just be some, have an agreement with the, you know, the industrial park and so forth, want it to go a little farther or something like that, you might wanna work something out with them. So, uh, that, you know, they, they get some utilities and, and maybe we could get something from them, we call it a jail, for example. Just as an example. So that's the only place that you can do it, use it for an infrastructure, you can't use it on the roads. And then those other ones are, the number two is, uh. Premium pay, I think it equated to thirteen dollars an hour, is that right, Beth, or something like that?
I. I didn't read that part.
Worked out, she, you could give premium pay, pay to the people that. Eligible workers and, I mean, I think it's something that, I don't know, nobody's gonna consider on, but that would have to, you'd have to have a lot of questions answered before you did that and you cannot, couldn't do it for county, uh, other county employees, only ones that are related to eligible workers. I suppose EMTs, uh, paramedics would be one possibly and possibly other worshippers fund. Sure, uh, deputies and so forth, that's something that, that could come into play. I'm kind of backing up to the top of that list. The number one thing is to respond to public health emergency with respect to the virus, or its negative impact. Including assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits. Or to aid impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. Well, it doesn't sound like there's too much there, but it, it's occurred to me, you know, uh, when they started writing checks to everybody, fourteen hundred dollars or whatever it was. Probably come up with a plan, uh, identify, uh, industries most impacted and small businesses impacted in Carroll County by this thing. But, but, by the lockdowns and all that. And I'm thinking of restaurants and, uh, I don't know who else might include in that. But you could come up with a plan, I don't know how much it's gonna be, do we know the amount of this yet?
Three point nine three.
It's over three million dollars.
That, that Carroll County will get?
Yes.
Wait, wait, how much?
It's almost worth a million dollars.
Four billion dollars?
Yes, it's three point nine.
It's just shy of four million.
That money's gonna come to us and it's gonna be a fund that we're gonna use.
And it's not gonna go away, uh, except that if you don't use it, it'll probably go back to the federal government. But they do say that if you can't figure out a way to use it, the thing to do would be to, you know, send it to the state so they can do something with it. So I'm thinking that you may want to consider, these are, these would be grants, uh, uh, that they could use in almost like a, uh, almost like tax evasion, I could envision an application, uh, for small businesses that feel like have, they've been impacted by, with lockdowns. And, and this is for, this would go back to, correct me if I'm wrong, this can, they could actually go back to like sometime, this in March. You can go right directly to the date of the bill was act. Passed by Congress, which was March the eleventh and signed by the president. So. You're not losing anything by working out a careful plan, uh, you can actually go back and, and retroactively to at least to, to March of the eleventh to do this and, and maybe pay out some money to small businesses. And it has to be, there has to be a contract for every one of them. And I, 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 I see something like, uh, the, the agreements that companies sign when they get, uh, incentive money from counties, uh, you know, if, if they don't get certain, whatever the benchmark is, it doesn't necessarily have to be employee employment based or maybe it's something that they need, uh, uh, maybe something no, uh, less complicated than sanitation supplies that they aren't, that they never had to buy before, something like that. Some kind of betrayal of an expense and proof that they actually spent this money. It, it may take somebody, uh, the administration of it's gonna be another, another question because it has to be audited, somebody to audit and there has to be proof of, uh, expenses and so forth, but that's the idea of this thing, it's a big, pretty big pot of money for, for all these purposes, so. But the first step is to get an ordinance in place and that's all you need to do today. So if the check comes in the mail next week, uh, you won't have to have a special meeting in order to, uh, take, take the money and get the money in the bank.
Uh, we'll have to have a special meeting even if we pass this today?
No, no, this takes care of it, yeah. If the money comes in before, I mean, they're pretty quick getting the, uh, those other stimulus out, so I, I expect they'll probably be trying to crank it out before May the eleventh, that's why I guess it'll come before May the eleventh. So the language of those paragraphs in there is, is pretty much based along the law itself. It's not, nothing, we're not creating, we're not making anything up. That, that, you can't do anything other than what's in that statute and, and there are a lot of gray areas, you know, but there's some, like I say, I've, to see if there's a way to help with other financial situations, the only way you can help the county's financial situation, you might have to have a consultant like a Baker Tilly, I don't know if they've, uh, offered their services to, uh, to calculate the impact of COVID on the county's revenues.
They've sent out the mail, nobody's decided anything on, on that.
The reason I say that is, that's probably something that will have to be done by an accountant. I don't think we, I don't know that we can do it ourselves, yeah, and that's something that you may.
The only thing that I would like to suggest is that when we do get this money, that we ask the treasurer to put it in its own fund so they can create its own, or its own bank account. So we could collect the interest and it's not intermingled, so you can keep track of what.
And it says it's a non-reverting fund. We'll just sit there in that fund.
You'd like, you don't have to encumber it at the end of the year or you don't lose it back to the county.
And you don't have to encumber, you don't have.
You get to the twenty twenty four, uh, uh, from that webcast. They said that if you have a, a contract for something that's gonna take a while to complete the contract, you know, whatever you're doing with the money and you're coming up on, uh, December twenty twenty four, you gotta finish that. As long as you've got that contract, then you can encumber it and it won't, it won't go back, you won't lose it.
But I'm at every year, like at the end of this year, we don't have to encumber it, put it in next year's fund.
I, I really don't see any capital, uh, in capital projects being anywhere funded with this money. Except perhaps for that's for sewer. And, um, I mean, cities and towns may be able to use.
The city and towns are getting their own funding as well.
They're getting their own funding. They'll be able to use it for, if they've got water utilities and, um. You know, I don't know, broadband, that's gonna just do the state, I think, you know, I don't know, I don't know if there's, if we can do broadband wise or. But any rate, um, the.
The auditors association has sent around questionnaires to, on our email group emails. And a lot of them have different suggestions that they are going to do for their planning with the commissioners. And one of them was the jail project. It was like tearing down and then re, um, doing a new facility for larger offices. So, um, I came from like three or four different towns, um, renovations to the courthouse. Broadband projects, in, you know, employees, air handling system and jail ventilation, so. There were several different ideas and I think you just have to get in there and then help to go by the law.
Right. Yeah, yeah, uh, the, the stated purpose of the law is, is in the findings, the preamble to the ordinance. The express, and it's a third paragraph, the express purpose of this, of these monies is to mitigate the fiscal effects stemming from the coronavirus, so. But, but you can't put it in the general finding, you can't. You create other governmental purposes other than what's specifically mentioned here.